That was pretty good. We have a roll call, please?
Mr. Coleman?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Zwicker?
Here.
Ms. Breyer?
Here.
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Mr. Person?
Here.
Ms. Palmer?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Thanks, Jason. First item on the agenda is a special presentation. Chip?
Thank you, Mayor Law, members of the Renton City Council. Chip Vincent, Economic Development Director for the City of Renton. And this evening, we are honoring a member of the Renton Municipal Arts Commission. The Arts Commission, which is within the Department of Community and Economic Development, was formed almost 50 years ago. At that time, it was given the task to advise city government on matters pertaining to the artistic and cultural development of the City of Renton. Since that time, the 13-member group has taken on more responsibilities. They are now charged with implementing the Arts and Culture Master Plan, which is intended to raise awareness of the arts and provide guidance for growth of wide-ranging arts and cultural activities within the City of Renton. This evening, we are honoring Britt McKenzie, who was appointed to the Renton Municipal Arts Commission in 2007, and for the past two years, has served as its chair. During her six years on the commission, she was instrumental in creating opportunities for local artists to exhibit their work within the city. During this time, more than 30 artists were represented through the Carco Artist Exhibit Program. As commission chair, she has provided strong leadership to a diverse and sometimes highly opinionated group of individuals on the Arts Commission. She has served that group with sensitivity, grace, and humor. As a sign of our gratitude and recognition of her tireless work on the Arts Commission and behalf of the arts and culture in the City of Renton, we ask that Mayor Law provide her with a certificate of our appreciation from the city.
Come on up, Britt.
Thank you very much. It was a really fun and rewarding challenge, and I thank you for the opportunity to serve Renton.
Thank you.
Thank you, Britt.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Coleman?
I'd like to move that we alter the agenda and add a second proclamation to the agenda tonight.
Okay, all right. So, it's been moved on second to move the second proclamation up on the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I have a sense that even though this is supposed to be a surprise, Mr. Zwicker guessed what the surprise was. We have a very special proclamation, and I'd ask a clerk to read it. I can provide a copy if need be.
I have one. Proclamation: Whereas Richard Zwicker has been a lifelong resident of the City of Renton and is a product of the Renton school system, and whereas his life experience in the city created in him a desire to serve and give back to his community, and whereas in 2008, Rich was appointed to the city council to fill a vacancy, and then was elected to serve a succeeding four-year term, and whereas among Rich's council assignments was his appointment to the city's planning and development committee, on which he served for five years, including one year as chair of the committee, and whereas during Rich's time on the planning and development committee, there were recommendations made on 71 docket items, from residential design standards to complete street standards, enhancing the quality and character of new development in the city, and whereas Rich's influence will be felt for years as the city implements the city center plan, and establishment of the board to oversee its implementation, which he helped shepherd through to adoption, and which he feels particular pride, and whereas for two years, Rich was the city's elected representative to the Sound City Association's Public Issues Committee, and whereas in that capacity, Rich helped shape a number of important regional issues and decisions that will benefit Renton for years to come, and whereas in recognition of his regional and strategic thinking, Rich was elected by his peers to serve on the Association of Washington City's Board of Directors from 2012 to 2013, and received the AWC Certificate of Municipal Leadership, and whereas Rich's ability to win friends and influence enemies was a factor in his election to the position of council president in 2012, and whereas while serving in this leadership position, Rich worked hard to help ensure that the city's annexation with the King County Library System resulted in improved service to Renton residents, including two new library buildings in town, and whereas Rich also helped to revise and clarify several council policies, such as the council travel policy, and whereas Rich's culinary skills were utilized as he volunteered to cook at every neighborhood picnic since he became a council member, plus the annual National Night Out Day of Service and Arbor Earth Day, probably because of the free hot dogs, and whereas during Rich's time on Renton City Council, he developed his oratory skills, which led to Doug Levy to ask him, "When did you become articulate?" And whereas the City of Renton has been well-served and will benefit for years to come because of Rich's service, now therefore, I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim December 9, 2013, to be Rich Zwicker Day in the City of Renton, and I urge all residents to acknowledge and thank Rich for his service, and to join me in the special observance, and witness whereof I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this 9th day of December 2013. Signed, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor?
I move that council concur in the proclamation, second.
It's been moved by Mr. Coleman, seconded by Mr. Prince, that council concur with this proclamation. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Augstine.
Do we need a roll call? I think the ayes have it. It's my pleasure to give you this proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. Thanks very much.
And, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Coleman?
On this Rich Zwicker Day, I am very honored to be able to give this gift from the city to Mr. Zwicker. Congratulations. He can maybe open that up.
Can you do it?
Drop it?
Oh, very nice.
Beautiful.
Thank you. First...
Mr. Mayor? Yes? May I take a moment?
Speaking role?
This first speaking role, exactly. Could you set the clock, please? Trust me, you won't need it.
Two minutes?
Counsel, thank you very much for this honor. I very much appreciate it. And Mayor Law, I appreciate the opportunity to serve with you. I have just a few other people that I just want to briefly... It's probably just more of a thank you list than anything. I've very much enjoyed my time on council, and very much enjoyed my time serving the citizens of Renton and meeting this fabulous Renton staff. I am going to specifically thank a few people while I have this opportunity. First, I'd like to thank Julia Medzigian, our council liaison. She has been a friend, a confidant, and very exceptional support in my six years that I've been here, and in fact, she was a supporter of me prior to my arriving to council, and I know that she will continue to be a friend afterwards, and I very much look forward to that. I wanted to make sure that I also thank all of the administrators and their staff. And please, administrators, when I name you, please pass my true admiration to your staff, because I know all of you know, as administrators, you're only as successful as your staff members make you. And so would be Chip, Greg, Terry, Kevin, and Mark, Ewan, and Nancy also, and I want to give thanks to Larry Warren in the City Attorney's Department. I think I challenged you on a few ideas, and really think that we had a very good working relationship, and that was also a very enjoyable point for me. I want to also thank Jason and the clerk's office. They did a fabulous job. Very much enjoyed working with you. But my biggest thank you is not yet, because I forgot two others. I want to thank former council member Tony Nelson, who gave me the very first advice as I came on council, which was, "Trust your committee," and I took that to heart, and I believe that is the heart, and I hope you guys, council members, remember that when you start your bigger discussion about this changing to maybe twice-a-month meetings, as the committee work is very important, and the key is to trust your committee and your committee members. And a huge shout-out to my dear friend, King Parker. Absolute inspiration, mentor, confidant also. I think we accomplished some great things together, and I truly miss him up here on the dais. And though, the biggest shout-out goes to the picnic crew. The picnic crew in the back, representing. There was nothing more fun than absolutely than community picnics, meeting the neighbors and being there, serving hot dogs with some dear, dear friends, who I will always remember and always cherish, and I will look forward to subbing in occasionally at neighborhood picnics in the future. And a big shout-out to George Stahl for, I think, getting our water fixed, because we had a broken water main today. Appreciate that. Again, counsel, thank you for the opportunity to serve with you. I wish you guys all the best in the future.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rich, and thanks for all your years of service in our community. And I wanted to mention about Britt again with the Arts Commission. We can't overemphasize how conscientious you've been serving on that committee, and you didn't want to say anything and take any kudos for yourself. Rich is not bashful, but you are bashful. You've really done a great job. We really appreciate everything you've done, so thank you very much.
You're here.
Okay, Raquel, you're up for a public hearing.
No kudos for me? Not yet, okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I am here to present staff's recommendation on school impact fees for 2014. I seem to always have a problem with this mouse. So, school impact fees are only assessed on new development, and the fees may only be used for capital facilities, not for operations or for maintenance, and they're also used to help offset impact of growth on new school facilities. The requested fees that are coming before you today are based on an assessment of the three school districts' capital facilities plans. The Issaquah School District is requesting an impact of $5,730 for each new single-family home. This would be a $1,992 increase from last year. They are also requesting a $1,097 school impact fee for multifamily units, and this is actually a new fee that they are requesting for 2014. The Kent School District is requesting an impact fee of $5,486 for each new single-family home. This would be a continuation of the fee from last year, and a $3,378 for new multifamily units, also a fee that's being continued from last year. The Renton School District is requesting a $5,455 fee for each new single-family home, and this is a $940 decrease from last year. And finally, they are also... The Renton School District is also requesting a $1,339 impact fee for multifamily units, and this would be a $31 increase from last year. Staff's recommendation, or actually, this item has been referred to the Finance Committee for review. City council's action to be taken tonight would be to hear any public testimony, approve the Finance Committee report that's been prepared for you, and present the ordinance for first and advancement to second and final reading. And that's all I have.
Okay, thanks, Raquel. Is there any question from council? Okay, this is a public hearing. We have a couple of people that have signed up to testify. Ralph Fortunato from the Kent School District?
Mayor Law, members of the Renton City Council, my name is Ralph Fortunato. I am the Director of Fiscal Services for the Kent School District. Our impact fees for the third consecutive years have not increased. We've looked the same for all the jurisdictions that we deal with, Renton, Covington, Kent, and also in King County. Over the last three years from the city of Renton, we've collected about $115,000 in impact fees. This past year, we didn't collect any from the City of Renton. We do get interest on that amount too, so our total that we have in the account for the city of Renton for impact fees is $115,673. We just continue in the fee. We're keeping it flat. We're not increasing it at all for 2014.
Okay, thank you. Next is Steve Crawford from the Issaquah School District.
Mayor Law, council members. Steve Crawford, Director of Capital Projects for the Issaquah School District. I wanted to thank you for your consideration of impact fees. It's an important part of our school funding program, particularly important to a lot of residents of the existing community. And the fees have changed a little bit. We put together our capital facilities plan every year. It's based on a formula that's been developed by King County, and we've seen changes in the student generation rates from single-family homes and changes in property costs with the direction from King County that can no longer build schools in the rural area. The land costs are considerably higher, and it's making a change in the total on the impact fee request, so again, we appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Person?
I just have a question.
Crawford?
Did I understand you right when you said that King County has changed the rules and you can't build a high school in a rural area?
That's correct.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer.
That was part of the work that was done by the Growth Management Planning Board, I believe, on which I sit, and the issue has to do with when schools are put into rural areas, and the impact on roads and the community that services that. And so, for example, Liberty High School with the Issaquah School District is one of the examples of how a school was put into a rural area, and then the impacts that happened with the roads and everything to it. So, it was at least a year in review with the board where they went kind of school by school or school district by school district, because, for example, I think it's Black Diamond or Ian Claw have an elementary school on a site, and they want to add an additional, I think, a middle school to the site, and they allow that, but they certainly have, you know, made some changes, and it will definitely impact the cost of purchasing land in urban areas rather than rural.
Yeah, it has also made the school site that we purchased for a long time, future growth hedge, that was in the rural area, no longer currently viable for school sites. We also have schools that were built. Liberty High School was constructed in the mid-'70s before there was an urban growth boundary line, so it makes for some interesting considerations.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Was there anybody else who wanted to testify during this public hearing?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, come on.
I'm Dave Beeden, B-E-E-D-O-N. I live in Renton, and I'm just confused about what the council is doing here. It says on the agenda, "Adoption of Issaquah, Kent, et cetera, impact fees and capital facilities plan." Does that mean that Renton is going to adopt a plan that these other communities are already using, or does it mean something else? Can somebody explain that to me?
I guess I don't exactly understand the question.
Well, my question is, what does it mean for Renton to adopt the Issaquah, Kent, and Renton School District impact fees and capital facilities?
Yeah, I can explain that. Yeah, it is kind of confusing. We've gotten used to it, but there's a little piece of each of those school districts within the incorporated City of Renton, and so what we're really talking about here is we're agreeing to collect this fee on behalf of those school districts at the time that people make applications for building permits or the appropriate stage in the process. And so, yeah, that could be quite confusing if you just walked into it, but basically, so because part of our city is in the Issaquah School District, for instance, we're saying that when a builder comes in and is going to build a house that's within the City of Renton but also within the Issaquah School District, that we will collect this fee that's been requested by Issaquah, and then it's a pass-through, we'll turn it over to the school district.
What is the advantage of that, if I may ask?
Well, it's... Interestingly, you know, I've been on council courses, as you know, a long time, and when we were first approached, I think Issaquah was the first district that approached us with the notion that by having impact fees at all, if you kind of get into why we have impact fees, it's so that new growth can help pay for capital improvements for the costs of new growth. And Issaquah was already collecting it from their own city and from unincorporated King County, but for fairness, if you were building within the Issaquah School District, they wanted to collect it from Renton, people that are building in the Issaquah School District in Renton. And the first few years, we actually did kind of create a lot of tension by sort of not doing that at first, but Issaquah finally came to us with a plan that showed that they were, in fact, growing their elementary school that was, you know, going to serve the City of Renton, and out of fairness convinced us to do it. In later years, we saw as Kent... You know, we went into the Kent area, and then our own school district decided they were going to use the same approach, and so in the end, in summary, it's a way that new development helps pay for the costs of the new schools so that existing residents don't have to pick them up.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Zwicker? Could the public hearing be closed?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Zwicker, seconded by Ms. Breyer, that the public hearing be closed. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We have some action this evening. So, we've had the public testimony. We have a Finance Committee report that'll be coming up, and if that's approved, we have an ordinance for first and advancement to second and final reading.
Yes.
Is there any desire to move that up on the agenda since we have...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer?
If you'd like, I'd be happy to move that committee report.
Second.
Are you okay with this motion to also move on the ordinance?
Yes.
Certainly. I think that would be great. Thank you.
So, it's been moved by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Mr. Person, that we move the Finance Committee report and also the ordinance up on the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Jason, do you have those?
I do.
Okay.
Finance Committee Committee Report. 2014 School District Impact Fees and Capital Facilities Plans. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence with the staff recommendation to adopt an ordinance to approve impact fee collection changes and capital facilities plans for three school districts within the City of Renton as follows. Collect the requested impact fee of $5,730, an increase of $1,992 for each new single-family home, and a new impact fee of $1,097 for each multifamily unit on behalf of the Issaquah School District, and continue to collect an impact fee of $5,486 for each new single-family home, and $3,378 for each new multifamily unit on behalf of the Kent School District, and collect the requested impact fee of $5,455, a decrease of $940 for each new single-family home, and $1,339, an increase of $31 for each new multifamily unit on behalf of the Renton School District. Finally, the committee recommends that the ordinance regarding this matter be presented for first and advancement for second and final reading. This is signed by the Chair and the three committee members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer?
I'd like to move acceptance of the Finance Committee report, and then also ask for the first and second reading.
Okay. Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Mr. Zwicker, that council approve the Finance Committee report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Okay, an ordinance regarding school district impact fees. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Section 41160 of Chapter 1 Administration and Enforcement of Title IV Development Regulations of City Code setting the impact fee of $5,730 per new single-family home, and $1,097 for each new multifamily unit in the Issaquah School District, retain the impact fee at $5,486 for each new single-family home, and $3,378 for each new multifamily unit in the Kent School District, set the impact fee at $5,455 for each new single-family home, and $1,339 for each new multifamily unit in the Renton School District, and adopt the capital facility plans of the Issaquah, Kent, and Renton Schools.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer?
I'd like to move that the ordinance be adopted as read and advanced to second and final reading.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Mr. Zwicker, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading, and it requires a roll call.
Oh, I believe we...
Can we...
We have to do one first.
We have to read it a second time first, yes. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending... Oh, I'm sorry, we need to approve that motion first.
So, it's been moved and seconded to approve this ordinance, to place on a second and final reading. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay, for second and final reading, school district impact fees. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Section 41160 of Chapter 1 Administration and Enforcement of Title IV Development Regulations of City Code setting the impact fee of $5,730 per new single-family home, and $1,097 for each new multifamily unit in the Issaquah School District, retain the impact fee at $5,486 for each new single-family home, and $3,378 for each new multifamily unit in the Kent School District, set the impact fee at $5,455 for each new single-family home, and $1,339 for each new multifamily unit in the Renton School District, and adopting the capital facilities plans of the Issaquah, Kent, and Renton Schools.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer?
I move that this ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Mr. Zwicker, that this ordinance be adopted as read, and this requires a roll call.
Mr. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Zwicker?
Aye.
Ms. Breyer?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Ms. Palmer?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor. All ayes.
The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Thank you, Raquel, for the report, and thank you to our school district representatives that are here this evening. Okay, we'll move back to the regular agenda. Administrative report, Mr. Covington.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have three items tonight. First, I want to just let the public know, again, hopefully that you can contact anybody that you think this would apply to, that our shelters for the cold weather will continue through the early part of the week. We're going to... Actually, through Wednesday mornings, December 11th, the center's located at the Renton Harambe Center, 316 South 3rd Street in downtown Renton. Check-in and registration is 8:30 PM, and it closes at 8:00 AM. All must register at the door, and rules for health and safety of client, staff, and the broader community will continue to apply. For anyone who needs further information, they can contact the city. As the council knows, we try to broadly disseminate this information, have done so through all the service agencies in the area and those who support and assist the homeless, so that's available. Renton was awarded a $150,000 grant by the Puget Sound Salmon Recovery Council to study and identify salmon-friendly projects along the Cedar River. This grant will help us determine the best ways to improve and restore the lower reaches of the Cedar River in Renton while meeting state and federal environmental requirements and our collective goals to help restore salmon in the river. So, that'll really help us, I think, as we figure out how we continue to try to maintain that river while keeping it salmon-friendly. And for the third item, I'll turn it over to our City Attorney, Larry Warren.
Mr. Mayor and the council, as the council undoubtedly knows, the Landing and the city had a public-private partnership in which the city contributed substantial funds to the infrastructure of Landing and ended up purchasing the parking garage that serves the Landing. There are... There are also in the various agreements that we signed, and they were lengthy, there was a requirement that there be a sign tower installed, and there's been discussions for some time with Harvest Partners about something other than the sign tower, and they've brought forth a proposal, which will be presented to you tonight, about that. There's also been a need to assign certain parking slots at that garage for one of the tenants, and that requires an amendment to an agreement as well. Those items have been presented to the council tonight in bullet format rather than actual agreement format. This really came about on Tuesday of this week, and so we didn't really have time to pull the agreement itself together. The second part is, there is a proposal on the table for ProMark Harvest Partners to sell the Landing to an outside investor, and that outside investor is doing its due duty. sell the landing to an outside investor, and that outside investor is doing its due diligence, has asked that we extend the parking garage use agreement for a period of 50 years, and that they be provided some options to purchase the parking garage. Those have been reduced to writing and have been included in your packet. To try and keep track of all of this, we have put together a resolution that contains a regular number of warehouses and a couple of authorizations for the mayor and city clerk to sign agreements. The reason this is being pushed forward tonight is because the due diligence needs to be done over the next period of time, and the council's not going to meet for a month, so we didn't want to delay that information getting to you and having the council do its consideration. So, we have a representative of our ProMark Harvest Partners here tonight that would like to address the council, and I think you've already?
Rod and Jerry, if you want to come up, and I think the mics are live here at the table, aren't they, Jay?
They should be.
You could make your presentation, then the council would be able to ask any questions that they may have. You can, yeah, that's fine, you can do that, or you can sit at the table, whatever's.
Mayor Law and members of the council, my name is Jerry Hillis, and I'm an attorney. I represent ProMark Harvest Partners, which owns the landing. I'm here really to answer any questions you might have about the agreements. I'll introduce to you Rod Swift, who will discuss with you the proposal for the improvements that they are hoping to make at the landing to make it even a better destination for residents of Renton and the surrounding area. Rod?
Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you for allowing us to take up your time on this. I think everybody has got the renderings, am I correct? So, as Larry mentioned, the catalyst of this is twofold. One is the impending sale of the landing to some investors from the original development group, and second, actually, part of that agreement that Larry mentioned was that we would have to do this sign or mutually agreed upon amenity once we hit 90% occupancy, and we're happy to say we're there. We're 89.47% occupied now, we'll hopefully be over 90% very soon, so this is a good thing, you know, I think things are successful at the landing, and hopefully this amenity that we're proposing will be a good alternative to a tower. So, first, I would like to just kind of go over the fireplace.
Stick that, if you want, just put that right there, and then everybody can see.
Fair. Down. There we go. I'll make it easier. Fireplace, this is, we've got an existing fireplace, and to put it mildly, it's not the most exciting design we've ever seen, but the new fireplace will actually do what the old one was intended to do, which was create a sense of place, a gathering place for the landing, right in front of the theater. It'll have a lot of, excuse me, furniture. It'll be low slung, so you can sit on it, and there's kind of a hearth around it, so you can sit on it, feel the warmth. The current one does none of those things, frankly, and so this, at a cost of, I'm forgetting exactly, you know, budgeted cost about $175,000, we'll take out the old one and put in the new one, and essentially what we'd like to do is just add yet another gathering place at the landing, some reason for people to come down and shop at our shopping center, putting more tax revenues to Renton's coffers. So, that's the first thing, and then I can actually show you. Design, wow, it's not showing up very well, but as you can see, it's something that people can sit around and enjoy the warmth as well, especially on a cold night like tonight. So, the second one is even more exciting.
Excuse me, Rod, can you go ahead, I mean, also include, because there's quite a bit of planning going in for new landscaping, new pavers, new outdoor seating, a number of things that will be part of that area around the fireplace, which will make it a much better gathering spot.
That's correct. Yeah, I mean, and we had to add new pavers because of the design of the current one, but it'll add that. All the items in red there, actually, it's furniture, there's some basalt columns, there'll be seating columns, actually, so low slung all around there, and then also two basalt benches that are kind of on the other side of the courtyard near Five Guys, and that, the idea there is to kind of have an endpoint to the gathering place. The basalt itself, the design, we've got basalt columns throughout the property, and this'll just add to that, that look and feel at the landing. We're really excited about this design, especially compared to the current one. Any questions on the fireplace?
Okay.
Okay. Right. Now, I don't, I'm not going to be able to put these, Jay, on that, but the second thing is a proposed sculpture, artist-commissioned sculpture that we would put in the roundabout, that it's the intersection of North 10th Place and North 10th Street. Currently, it's landscaped with a sign. Everybody has got the plans. Essentially, we're calling it the sundial, but as I, is that better? There we go.
We are just your staff.
I know, I appreciate it, thank you, Jay.
You ready?
Yes. The nighttime one, I think, is actually the night. Better? There we go. So, we're presenting two renderings of the design, one's daytime view, one's a nighttime view. This is the nighttime one that's up there. Like I said, we were calling it the sundial, that was kind of the original thought, and as this went through many iterations and adjustments, it started looking more and more like an airplane wing, is really what it looks like. That's kind of now, as we see it, it's kind of supposed to evoke that feel, honor the Renton's heritage and future as a major aerospace manufacturing hub. Obviously, we, everyone knows here that our current site was Boeing Surplus Land, so I think honoring that heritage as well is a kind of more impactful and iconic gesture than a tower that would sit in the middle of the parking lot. This is the main, one of the main entrances to the center, so we think it, visibility is high, and frankly, I think it's a beautiful design. Brumbaugh Associates has really done a great job. It would be an artist-commissioned piece, so we've not chosen an artist, ideally it'd be a local artist, that's kind of up in the air right now. However, you know, the design itself, we just feel is a much more, like I said, a much more impactful and iconic design than any tower would be. Does anyone have any questions about that?
Council, have any questions?
Yeah, Marcy?
Well, is it a sundial?
Not technically.
Okay, so it looks like it's pointing north?
Yeah.
From there, but it won't really be, okay.
It was just more the look, you can kind of see the basalt, almost blocks that are lit, and it was just, you know, it's an artist rendition, essentially.
Right.
So, it wouldn't be a working sundial.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Brier.
I'd just like to comment that it's a great improvement over the tower drawings that I remember seeing at the beginning of the landing plans, so I think it's a really nice-looking piece, and I'm also excited to see a fireplace that you can get a little closer to, so.
Agreed.
Any other questions from council?
Well, Mr. Mayor, mine's more the concern, and because this is, they're doing this, they were going to do it anyway, but to hurry up to get this done is because they need these agreements signed to complete the sale, which is, I understand, I'm not, my concern is, are we adequately protected that this will be done if we approve, if we approve it? Because once, once a new buyer comes in, and if this isn't completed, they can say, "Well, we didn't make that agreement." So, I guess that's my, my whole concern with this is that we are adequately protected. I mean, these pictures look great, and I know the people here tonight fully anticipate that they will go through with it, but once the sale's completed, the players change, and that's my concern.
Mr. Warren here.
Mr. Hillis can also answer this, but we're, because of the way the contracts are arranged, we're going to do an amendment, and these are going to be changes from the existing contracts, way of contract remedies, and we're also going to put language in the agreement that the sections of contract are applicable to any assinees. So, it will be a contract obligation of the new buyers' one, and if that occurs as well.
Okay. The only, the only reason that we're moving it forward tonight, pardon me, is because the city attorney's office has spent a lot of time going over these contracts to make sure that we protect the interests of the city in this proposition, so we feel very comfortable with it.
I just want to confirm what has been said, the reason to get this done now is, in fact, to bind a new owner, if there is a new owner of the landing, and so the agreement that your city attorney has drafted requires that anybody who buys this property is bound by the agreement that we're hoping that you'll enter into after tonight's reading of the resolution.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Swicker.
Yeah. At this point, obviously, it's more comment than any substantive discussion on this. So, currently, the new buyer would be bound by the fact that they had to build a sign, the $400,000 sign, because that's the subject of the original agreement. It happened, obviously, the landing happened prior to my coming on council, and today is my last day on council, so I, I've always been leery of this fireplace redesign as being a way to offset. I don't understand why we wanted the sign in the first place, and I wasn't on council, but clearly council wanted a $400,000 sign. Many of these council members are still here, some aren't, so I'm not asking them to defend or explain it to me, because again, at this point, I can only comment. I think the fireplace redesign is just something that Harvest Partners has to deal with on their own. It's an amenity for them, it makes their mall better. I don't think that it's necessarily the proper exchange for the sign that a previous council thought was worth $400,000 as signage, and I, and I think that the sundial motif also is lacking. Now, again, it's purely comment on my part because I didn't quite understand why a big spire sign was worth $400,000. That being said, again, I'm not going to be on council in the future. I don't see the rush, because this negotiation could also take place with the new ownership, because the new owners will also have the obligation of a $400,000 sign when they come on. So, the due diligence aspect of things, I'm not quite buying unless I'm hearing that these new amenities make it, Harvest Partners' sale to the new ones makes their property even better and therefore worth more money, which then says, now I'm investing $400,000 to make them more money, which I don't think is necessarily what we were supposed to be doing with the $400,000. So, as I've always said, if they wanted to do, like, maybe also ink a, they'll sponsor River Days for the next 20 years and bind the new owners with that, I would be happy to horse trade that, but I just have some concerns, and again, as this is my last council meeting, I just wanted to voice them.
I could comment on one aspect, I mean, the sale and the due diligence is an important piece of this. I mean, the other part of the agreement, though, is, you know, once we reach 90% occupancy, and we're there, we're going to be there, you know, within the next month, most likely, you know, so that's another piece of the puzzle here. We, once we get to 90%, we got to come to an agreement anyway. We thought now was a good time to address both issues simultaneously. That was part of it as well.
I think the other argument can be made, that a sign is to help the landing promote the landing. It's not to promote the city of Renton. And clearly, from my perspective, and this gets to be a little bit subjective, we have former council members that were, just love the thought of a big sign that you could see from the freeway. I'm much more interested in, in the owners making an investment that, you know, for the experience of the citizens that are using it, frankly, and I think what they have proposed gives something very nice that we wouldn't assume would happen if they indeed were building a sign in addition to that. So, you know, I applaud the fact that they've been very open to looking at things that, to the degree we can, would enhance the experience that people have at the landing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Palmer.
When you talk about enhancing the experience, the one thing that we've been told from the beginning, and I hear from people all the time, is we will have a place for kids, and there isn't. One time, someone said to me, "Well, we have those rocks with the water." Well, I really don't want my three-year-old playing on the rocks by the water.
Me neither.
And I don't see that enhancement in the fireplace, and it seems like that would be the time to do it, that would be the place and the time. But I hear that all the time, that when are they going to add something for the kids?
The problem is, the reason, the reason we have not, the problem is, is where we're going to put it. So, if we were to put it, it would have to be in place where the fireplace is. We literally don't have a space to, I mean, we manage Redmond Town Center's example, and there are some playgrounds, these are very large areas to make it, anything that a certain number of kids are going to want to play, parents come, they're large, and frankly, we don't have the space and the common area to do both. So, we've, you know, over time, initially in the development, we chose a fireplace in lieu of that, and the reasons why, I'm not even clear anymore, that was a decision made, and now that we have one, we'd like to improve it. So, that's kind, that's our reasoning at least.
Well, I'm not thinking of a whole playground, but just something, there isn't, isn't there anything you can incorporate into the redesign of the fireplace area? I mean, I see lots of red, you said those are pieces of furniture. I know there's lots of creative people out there, we're building an accessible playground that's just amazing, and I'm not looking for all that, but there are things that you can do that would make it more kid-friendly.
Okay.
Just a thought.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I think, I, my only concern on this, and I think it's been answered, is that it gets done, you know. I like, I like it, I think this makes the center look nicer, and I was on the council when Mr. Parker wanted that big sign and convinced us that if we didn't have that sign, the landing would not, people wouldn't come to the landing. What has happened since we, and with the sign, is what we found out is, that's not what's going to bring people here, and that is not what has, and so we're, so we're successfully have attracted the people. I think this is, is what is more in tune to what we would like to see down there, or I would like to see down there, so I'm in favor of it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Swicker.
Now that he's pointed out I was king, I withdraw.
Is there any other legitimate comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corwin.
Yeah, I would add, and I was on the council at the time, too, I think that the freeway sign is really effective, that we have on 405 that says, "Landing, next exit," and that probably covers what some of us are thinking we needed in a tall sign. And then, the only other thing I was going to ask, and I don't want to pry, but I'm sure there's a lot of residents asking themselves about the sale of the landing. It's a beloved place, I'm hopeful that this is an exciting new chapter. Can you tell us anything about, about that? You know, I can't identify the buyer yet, but there's a contract, so it's under contract, we call it, or hoping to close by the end of the month. It's actually a current client of mine, we manage for them, JSH Properties does, manages it for them. They're a large institutional investor, which means they own billions of dollars of assets across the nation. They're a great steward of properties, they are buying this as what's called a part of their core fund, core fund, which really means, in that parlance, is that this is an asset that's not, that is going to be a long-term hold, something they're going to take care of, something we kind of talk about, it's going to be put, they're going to put it on the cover of their, you know, investment guide and stuff like that. I mean, it's a, it's a serious buyer, he's going to take serious care of this property, and we're happy to say personally that they're going to keep me on and the rest of the JSH team. So, you know, Don, you know, I could tell you, you know, these guys, the buyers, they're going to abide by these contracts, and I'm going to make sure it as well, and so will Jerry, I mean, there's no, we don't have any fear of that.
I don't know that I'll be kept on, but let me comment on one, one part of it. Before the sale takes place, the agreement that we have with the city requires us to submit who the buyer is and why they're qualified to own this, and to make sure that you're comfortable with their ability to perform as, as Transwestern has done. So, you will see full disclosure in terms of who they are and what they've done and what their assets are, so that you'll feel comfortable with, with that.
Can I ask, is it fair to, do I understand correctly, that, I mean, Harvest Partners stepped in where there wasn't retail and had a vision as a development company that they could, they could make a successful retail venture and built it, developed it, laid it all out, and this is really the transition to somebody that would be the steward of that project? That's correct. I mean, the original goal was always, like any developer, is to develop a raw piece of lantern and something beautiful, hopefully, and then sell it. And, you know, the timing was off on this. Right. You held it a little longer than you might have if the economy had been strong the whole way, so. That's right. But now we're at the place, I mean, this is a positive, again, I mean, we're, we're going to be at 90%. I mean, these assets of this size and scale, I mean, A, it got interest from all across the nation. Assets of this size and scale do not sell at the price that they're listing it at, or, you know, getting, unless it's a quality piece of product in a good, you know, in a good region and a good city. So, this is a positive. Very nice.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'd just add, I think, follow up on what Council President Corman said, we knew from the initial discussions with Transwestern Harvest Partners that they ultimately wanted to sell this property once they got it up and going. We, looking back, I don't think we could have had a better partner through the worst recession, certainly in the last 100 years, to just hang on, and Careford was a wonderful credit to the company, and obviously, as Rod said, has now come back, and it's going to be a great asset for the city for years to come.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor? Yeah, I want to, I want to add to that, too. I thought it was just a heroic effort by Harvest Partners, and just the steepest downturn that I'd ever seen in my lifetime, and to just keep going, and to keep investing, and to keep recruiting. And there were some years in there where every other city in King County was losing year-over-year businesses, and we were gaining them, because Harvest Partners was out there completing the landing. And never once did it feel like you were compromising on anything related to the quality or the way you were building it out. So, yeah, my hat is absolutely off to you for the fine job of carrying that this far. And so I asked the question, I know there's going to be a lot of people concerned about the stewardship of it, but I'm glad to hear you're finding somebody very capable.
Yeah, we're excited about it. Oh, yeah.
Marcie just pointed out a very important point to me. I think the city stands to get some good sales tax and REIT revenue off of this sale, so.
Oh, yes.
It is in our, the city's advantage.
Don't spend the one-time money already.
I've got some ideas.
And, Mr. Mayor? Yeah, and, I mean, there was talk about the parking garage, you're talking about the whole property, though. Well, yeah, so.
A whole thing selling, that's.
So we get, and I don't want to put you on the spot, and this isn't, this isn't the primary interest, but I know when real estate changes over, there are real estate taxes. But then there was also talk about the parking garage, and frankly, if the new buyer wanted to purchase that back from the city, I'd be interested in how we could do that, so.
The mayor's already brought that up.
Yeah, so I thought that was, that would be maybe even more money.
They had a little bit in the last meeting, how long it would take before I brought it up.
20 minutes.
Is there any other question in regards to what Rod has presented to us? Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate you coming down.
Yeah, we appreciate your consideration.
Good catch. Good catch.
I might mention, Mr. Mayor, that we don't normally do a resolution, but because of how fast this advanced, and to keep track of all the paperwork that's flying around, we wanted the council just to authorize the mayor to move forward. So we did it by means of a resolution this time, it's a little more formal than we would normally do.
Okay, thank you. Next item is audience comment. We have a number of people concerned about the frequency of council meetings that have signed up to address the council. Give your name, city of residence, for the record, you have five minutes, the clock is next to the city clerk.
Good evening, my name is Stuart Avery, City of Renton, last name A-V-E-R-Y. First off, I wanted to speak regarding one of the subjects of the committee of the hall meetings, where the fire chief was in, talking to the council members about their efforts in training, and that the fire force is aging, and that there's replenishment. And council member Taylor had mentioned, and asked whether or not there's been any exploration into looking at further diversifying our first responders, our fire department. And I just wanted to reiterate the need for our city to be looking at diversifying the fire department, especially in view of their relationship with citizens in times of need. It's really critical that in a city where we've got more than 50% of our residents are people of color, that are first responders, and those people that we ask them to put their trust in, are very representative of the community which they're serving, so just a small point on that. In regards to council meeting frequency, this has been something that's been talked about several times over the last year or two, I suppose. It's either been public speaking time, and how long we can speak, or how often we're going to have public meetings. And I'm just here to tell you that this, you know, really sounds like a solution in search of a problem. I just do not understand where the city and the residents are being mis-served by having council meetings on a weekly basis. I think that the council owes it to the citizens to make a very strong argument, should you decide to have them less often than you do right now. And part of the discussion this afternoon was, is that it may give the committee of the hall meetings more relevance, where you could speak longer on subjects that you've been discussing, and that possibly, public comment could be incorporated into that, which I think is a lovely idea. I think you should do that now. If such action were taken, I would hope that at least those committee of the hall meetings would be bumped up to a time where most people, like myself, who hold full-time jobs, have a difficult time getting to the city hall at 5:30. I skipped my dinner tonight, I hope it's still warm when I get home. Councilman Corman had, Council President Corman had mentioned that, you know, when he was chasing a personal issue back before he was on the council, that in his mind, it would have been more helpful had the council meetings not been happening at this frequency, because he felt like he always had to be present, that his representatives always had to be present, and on top of it. That's true, but that won't change if the meetings are held less frequently. The fact of the matter is, is that the city's going to continue to work towards legislative action, regardless if you're having a public meeting or not, you're not going to stop doing your jobs. You're just going to get further along before the people have an understanding of what is happening. And what I see is that this is going to create a situation where more public information requests are going to be occurring, because people are going to feel like they are out of the loop, and they don't know what's going on. I don't think that this builds trust between the city leadership and the people. I think what it does is it further alienates and disenfranchises the residents whom you represent. So, again, I have to say that you need to make a strong case to the public for why you want to have less frequent meetings. And then in doing so, if you're going to meet less, and we're going to have less opportunity to speak with you, are you going to reduce your pay by the same amount of time you're reducing your service to the community? I don't think so. I don't think you get paid enough as it is for the work you do. I would rather you get paid better than see us less. We need representation that is transparent, and transparency.
Excuse me, Ms. Avery, five minutes is up.
I appreciate your time very much, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Dave Beeden, B-E-E-D-O-N, I live in Renton. This idea of changing the frequency of meetings is an interesting, interesting one. And I, as a member of the public, who doesn't have a lot of insight into how the council operates behind the scenes, I guess I don't have an objection, just straight off the bat, but, where am I going? I think it's a good idea to try to make the council operate more efficiently, and with more predictability, and things like that. And I heard bits like that in the council of the hall meeting. But as Stuart Avery said, the effect on the public is something you have to seriously consider. And I've only been involved with city council meetings for about a year, and the thing that got me here was the library issue. And when I look back at how things were happening during that issue, how fast things were happening, how many things were happening during a given period of time, I'm a little afraid that if you just set a rigid, every-other-week schedule, and some big deal comes up that riles up the citizenry, whatever that is, that you, you need to ensure that you have the flexibility as a council to change your schedule to meet that situation. So if you had been doing, if you had cut back to every-other-week during this library process, the citizens who were very interested in the library issue would have been, would have been even further alienated. I mean, there were issues about transparency, and is the council listening, blah, blah, blah. So just keep in mind that we, as citizens, need that opportunity to interact with you in person, in meetings like this. So if your council meetings go to an every-other-week schedule, then please consider shifting some of that comment ability over to the council of the hall meetings. So just please stay flexible with it, and keep the citizens in mind in your discussions of this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Beth Asher.
Beth Asher, City of Renton. And I am not in favor of changing the frequency of council meetings, basically because it does limit access for the public. The committee of the hall typically starts between 4:00 to 5:30. If you're working stiff like me, it makes it really difficult to get here. In fact, I'm commuting from Redmond now, and I drove like a bat out of hell to make sure I made it. And I also think it disenfranchises those who would have a problem approaching. It gives them less opportunity to get an advocate to approach for them, to bring up an issue, or to propose a solution, or just to put something on the table that they think should be there. The less time that we have with you, the less you are serving us, and serving, I don't know, the city staff, you know, outside interests that occupy your attention. The people elect you to represent us, not to represent anyone else. And to take away our face time with you, which we have very little of, anyway, and replace four times a month with twice a month, and maybe a committee of the hall, which we don't know when it will start, or how much time will be allowed, et cetera, is really to disenfranchise us, and to limit your service to us. We are your constituents, we are supposed to trust you, we are supposed to look up to you, we are supposed to get your help. And the lack of transparency is apparent, in that this was not published in the paper, this was not put on patch, this was not put out anywhere, when this proposal, which has been brooded about several times, was put on the committee of the halls' agenda, so that the public would know about it. There, right there is the issue, right there's the heart of the issue. Less face time, still the same lack of transparency we've always had, and it really is frustrating. And I'm sure for people that would like to advocate for groups that don't have a voice, because perhaps they're new Americans, they may be elderly, they may be schoolchildren, they may be anyone, it's going to make it extremely difficult for them. And I can't believe that that would really be your intent, that you would distance yourself from the people you're supposed to serve, and do less for them, and put a sugar coating on it, to make it look plausible and good. I would just ask you to reconsider. Or if you're going to do that, and go to twice a month, then I would suggest you replace those two with face-to-face meetings or town hall meetings, twice a month, on a Saturday, when working people can attend. I would suggest you provide daycare and translation services. Really serve the people that you are supposed to. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and city council members, and members of the public on the television. My name is Kathy Ozenkopf, I've been here at the city council meetings a number of times in the past year or two, discussing the King County Library issue, and the building of the library and its location. I have observed a great deal in the city council meetings that I have attended, and I want to present with you three ideas, three concerns that I have related. The first concern is timely management of city business. I think tonight, we see this right up front. The urgent need for the landing contract is essential tonight, it was essential to be presented. Another thing that was essential to be presented was, in May of this year, when the King County Library System presented their plans to you for the library project, they presented those on a Friday afternoon, you got the documents, and guess what? Monday evening, you were expected to make a decision, and you did make that decision. I'm not happy with the decision you made on the plan, but you made it in very short timeline. How are you going to do that with fewer council meetings, and fewer opportunities to discuss and meet? The third thing I've seen, is, the next thing I've seen is a continuity of city business. The refresh my memory on the topic idea, there is, one of your city council members was absent from a very essential meeting on a vacation, and it took time from the council to update that person on what needed to be done, because the decision needed to be made that night. You were going to have a vote, you had to go back into the back room and discuss it. The third thing I see happening is the Monday, Monday night meetings associated with the library project, they started in April of 2011, when the citizens brought this topic to you and said, "We do not want the library moved from its current location over the river at Liberty Park." Guess what the city council felt? This was just a few citizens. So guess what? The following April, one year later, April 2012, not just a few citizens, over 6,500 citizens' signatures had been a certified ballot initiative, that the citizens of Renton had stood on the street corners and collected those signatures in the ice and snow, to try and make you understand the library location needed to remain at Liberty Park and over the river. That is how long it took you to understand, even though we were down here on weekly Monday meetings. How long does it take you to get it? So that's all. We know this story. We know that then, the project was delayed, it finally went to the ballot measure, the citizens finally won the issue with a 76% win, and that ballot issue was in 2011, or 2012, in August. That's how long it took. For one, one project that affects many, many citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council. Again, my name's David Keyes, K-E-Y-E-S, as in a rent. I also came to speak on this issue of how city council meetings might be addressed, whether it was limiting time of public speaking, or whether it was limiting the number of weeks itself. I can see that you'd need time as a council to consider more things than you consider in the very brief committee of the hall meetings that you have each week. But I have to think that there's a better way of doing it than reducing the number of council meetings where the public can speak to you. of council meetings where the public can speak to you. Just to go back on the library issue very briefly, I don't have to relive the whole thing, but there were a number of times where, over a period of three or four weeks, things were happening daily, either with different input from KCLS, or decisions you were being asked to make, whether or not you had information appropriate to make those decisions. In spite of some of the statements that were made by council members in a number of cases, we think the citizens were keeping better informed through direct questioning KCLS than the information that was generally available to the council. We think that we're not necessarily, obviously, we're, when we testified before you, we're bringing up our perspective on things, our viewpoint on things, but we think we also provided information you needed to have to consider at times, or at least reinforcement in your minds that there were issues that were important that were not part of the general discussion. I didn't see that happening if, on an ongoing issue, if you're only having public input every two weeks. Now, Mr. Person made an interesting comment in the committee of the whole tonight, saying that perhaps there would be public input in the committee of the whole meetings, if the committee of the whole meetings were longer. And I certainly think that would be potentially a positive thing, but I'm assuming you'd want to limit that specifically to topics that were at hand in that committee of the whole, and I think Randy, you said that. The problem for the public is we have no control over the agenda for the committee of the whole meeting. And so while it might help those of you on the council to get public input on very specific topics, again, the idea of continuous public input would just be blown away. And the kinds of comments Beth made earlier were a reflection, in part, on what Greg Taylor said the last time we had this before the council. I see it as a move that, and I think much of the public will see it as a move towards less transparency in general, and much more difficulty for members of the public that feel they're disenfranchised anyway. And I'd ask you to very closely consider those issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yeah, I guess I would like to respond, just so people know we're thinking about their comments. So really, all the comments that Mr. Keyes included, you know, I'm open-minded about this, and the library is definitely on my mind as we talk about this, as are other issues. But, you know, one thing I guess I'd ask the public to think about, and we will have more public comment opportunity before we make any kind of a change. In fact, I think it was Mr. Person's intention, just to give everybody a heads-up, that it's now looking like, by the way, the second week of January, we might discuss this as a council. And part of Mr. Person's intention was to make sure the public knew that that was something that we were going to discuss. But, you know, it's getting back to the point I was going to make, is I actually have thought long and hard about what would have made the library issue move through here more smoothly. And one problem we have with the council meetings themselves is that is where, that's sort of generally the final action on, you know, those activities that are going on in the city. And really, I think we want the public to be participants in earlier stages of each project, and we don't want it to be disjointed either. And we want it to happen at hours that people that have day jobs can actually come and participate. And so, you know, I don't know if it would have gone smoother if, instead of, you know, having all of the dialogue happen in the council meeting, if we'd had some off-week committee of the whole meetings focused on the library with public comment, if that would have changed things. Probably more public comment earlier in the process than those council meetings where we were, you know, right on the eve of letting a contract or something. I think just about everybody would agree that that would have been good. So it certainly, as I consider this, or ponder it really, it's not my intention at all to cut the public out, and it'd be my interest in engaging the public comment when it's timely, in a context where, you know, where we could focus. And I would also say that while, you know, actually, the only good decisions I've ever made on council are ones where I've gotten really good public coaching and advice, and people saying, "Watch out, this is really important, you know, make this decision." So the public's comments are extraordinarily important to me. But I'd also point out that the council also needs time, that I need time to take those comments and do my work with the rest of the council. And I, you know, I don't, for those that aren't familiar, because of open public meetings, we can't talk, except for in a public meeting. A public meeting could be a committee of the whole meeting, it could be another subcommittee meeting, it could be the council meeting. But usually, if we wait until we're in a council meeting to talk about something, there's a lot of work that's already been done on the part of the staff. And so, again, I think there's interest in having council get together to talk about the public input we've received at an earlier stage in the process. And then finally, while it would be nice to do that and have all the council meetings we have currently, there is the cost to consider. But if you look around the council chambers here, you'll see all of our department heads. You'll see crew doing the video cameras. There's people in the clerk's office, there's people in the council office supporting the meeting. So you get to a point where you want to have an appropriate amount of expenditures for the business. And you want to have it focused when we are getting together. If we knew we were getting together just on the library, we could have staff here that represent the community services department in the library, but we don't have to have, you know, the, say, the fire chief in attendance or something. So anyways, those are some thoughts. I just want to say that we do care about what the public thinks about this, and it hasn't been determined in any way at this point. So thank you for the comments.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Mayor.
I just want to add and remind people that coming to a council meeting is just one of the opportunities that residents have to contact us. We get emails every day, and, you know, if you don't have our phone number, you call City Hall, and they'll give you my cellphone number. So there's lots of other opportunities. Of course, that would probably be more one-on-one. However, with emails, you can also email all the council members. So it's not a requirement that you attend a 7 o'clock meeting to contact us.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. President.
One final comment. I'm trying to keep it my final comment, but another thing that was mentioned was the, you know, things that come up quick. And yeah, there are things that come up quick, and actually, and I agree with the person who spoke and said, you know, sometimes these come up so fast, we don't even have time to process them. I think, and Mr. Mayor, you and I have spoken about, if we went to fewer final action meetings each month, it would then be a requirement of staff that they start looking at the calendar in advance of these issues, and picking the meeting where it's going to come to the meeting. But right now, we're in a, you know, we're in a paradigm where there's always another meeting the next week, so they basically work at their schedule and then say, "Okay, this will go on Monday's meeting." And they might do that on a Thursday, or they might do it on a Friday. And I think we would have to move into a new paradigm where there would be a project schedule, and they would have to anticipate, you know, that there's a certain meeting they're going to have to hit, and then plan for it. Now, I guess I can't say right now with certainty that we won't still get short-changed in the amount of time that the council has and the public has, but it would be a new requirement that that planning occur in advance, that you don't just have another meeting right around the corner that you can bring it to.
Well, certainly before, I mean, before you have this for the committee of the whole meeting, we will have our staff do a lot of research to be able to provide you what most of the other cities are doing.
Okay.
Because very few cities have weekly council meetings. Most of them do have study sessions on the opposite weeks in which they have lengthy discussions about things. But, you know, we can find out about public participation, we can find out about how they handle the council business on a twice-a-month basis.
Right. Mr. Mayor, we started to do that, at least our analysis so far. We're the only suburban city in King County that still has four meetings a month. Every other city has either two or three meetings a month. So we'll be able to get a lot of information about how staff do the organizing.
Rather than just giving the staff, we'll check with them and just ask them how they deal with these things, and how the public is engaged.
Right. Exactly. We can determine that.
Okay. Howard McComber.
I'm Howard McComber, live in the City of Renton. I'm going to comment on this for a second. I think probably I can match you for attendance. I think, I think really and truly, it's very important to have this interaction between the people and their government. The question is, do you want to continue to have the most open dialogue with your citizens, or do you want to lose that as some of the other cities do? I choose to live in Renton. I think the city has, we have some heated discussions and some powerful opinions, but we have an area here where we can feel that the citizens have an approachable government. And I think that's very important. And really and truly, limiting the number of meetings limits the interaction between the citizens and the government, and it's that easy. Second point, I want to thank everybody, especially the staff, Jay's group, Karen, and all the people who go out and help us with, the people who are having trouble in the cult. This is Christmas time. It's time to think about people who have more challenges, and we need to work with those people. They're very precious, and they're very important. And we have a large segment of our population. Renton has a smaller income stream than the county in average. The area that I live, up in the Sunset area, up in Highlands, we have lower than the rest. I think, though, the people by people, person by person, all of our values exactly the same. And I think it's important that we work towards helping each other. I liked Stewart's opinion that we need to have, and I'd like to see, the fire department and some of the other folks represent the way we look in the community. I think that's very important. It's going to have to happen. And the more that we get together, the more we communicate, the better off we are. I think communication's huge. I think cooperation's great. We have a city that has a lot of cooperation. We have a tremendous amount of volunteerism. I think that's essential. Everywhere you look, you'll see the mayor's face in the middle of a lot of volunteers doing a lot of work everywhere. And that's because you're out there doing it. I think about Rich, we're going to miss him at the picnic, so I can't really believe it because I can't imagine it. But he and Kevin out there cooking hot dogs with sweat rolling down their faces, and Don is always in there, and I don't know how you do that, because my hair's the same color as yours, and I couldn't do that. But anyway, I appreciate all the service. Everybody's serving, everybody's trying, but I think the more service we do, the better. I'll be up here, and I'll be contacting you about affordable housing, because I think we need more affordable housing in our city. I think that there's some people who are trying to question whether we need affordable housing, but I live in the city, and I see a lot of need for people on having houses that cost less, and we're not building any in the City of Renton right now. And we can build them. I don't want them built with tax money, any more than we can help. I'd like to have it done on a private basis and with a lot of imagination. And we have a lot of imagination and creativity here, and we can do it, and I think it's important. We have a lot of problems, but the solutions to the problems not only come from you, but it comes from everybody, and it comes from working together, and it comes from cooperation. So we come up with ideas, and we have to be able to give and take and work on ideas and make things happen that are different. So I prefer living in Renton, where we have a lot of meetings and a lot of communication, and we work out solutions. We need solutions that require cooperation. And I think we need to meet in order to have the cooperation. That's my opinion. I've seen it very often in my life. Too few meetings are not necessarily a better way to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Paul Molet.
My name is Paul Molet, Renton. Thank you. Nice to see you all again. By the way, I'm not a one-issue person. I am concerned with constitutional issues primarily, not only in our country, but also in our city. To start with, I want to make an observation, I think I made to Councilman Prince earlier, is that the cold weather has proven one thing out, okay? Is that birds are a creature of habit like people. And they have gotten used to the smart meters because they're back in full. And with the cold weather that's been here, they are drove, they're driving me crazy. I love it.
We'll bring up some more meters.
No, don't put any more up. Not in my neighborhood anyway. But anyway, I just wanted to mention that to you, is that it took a while for them to get, either they got used to it, or whatever it was, but they certainly have changed, okay? When the issue I want to talk about tonight, obviously, all the comments have been made tonight about the frequency of meetings and so on, and I think the main issue has been transparency. And it's interesting to me that most of the people that were here tonight were involved in the library issue. Why is that? Because part of the problem, you see, was the frustration that when they found out about an issue that was going to be discussed was being voted on that same night. I think what was mentioned about town meetings, why is it that politicians in Washington come out to their constituents and have town meetings? Well, because they want to find out what the people want, what the people are saying. Well, the problem here, you see, is that the people come up and talk to you, but there's no feedback. Tonight, there was a little bit of feedback from Monday, okay? But in all other instances, during the library issues and so on, it was like, we all felt like we were talking to a stone wall. Because the way it's organized, there's, by the time we find out about it, the decisions have been made, okay? The thing that I want to point out to you tonight, I hope this is working on. Put it on. It's on. Okay. Notice this article, okay? I got that out of tonight. I spotted that, and I said, "My gosh, that's what's happening." I said, "They're cutting down the media because he wants control." Well, why are we here discussing to have fewer meetings? Is it because we want to have less input from the people? I don't think so, but that's what it feels like, you see? It's just simply a feeling that is, that the citizens end up with, is that we want to have fewer meetings, or the other discussion that was made was, at one point in time, was we ought to have maybe two minutes present from the people, like they do in Seattle. Do you want to turn this into what they do in King County or the City of Seattle? Certainly not, but you have a good council. I sat there tonight at the council of the whole meeting, and I was admiring the, I want to say this correctly, the commitment and the information that each one of you had about the information that you conveyed to each other and so on. And I was admiring that level of commitment to those people, and I want to congratulate you for that, okay? You are doing good, and you're here for a good reason, not just for political reasons, but you're here to serve the city. So therefore, let's continue this conversation, but let's give us an opportunity to discuss these issues ahead of time, like Randy said, okay? Find some way of organizing yourselves, whether it be meeting once a month or once a year, it makes no difference. Let's organize it properly so that the people have Let's organize it properly so that the people have an opportunity to have some feedback as that we agree with you or we don't, okay? Thanks, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Okay, council, moving on to the consent agenda. We have nine items for council consideration. Are there any items that council member like pulled?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move approval of the consent agenda as published.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Carmen, seconded by Ms. Palmer, that council approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have it. Unfinished business, Mr. Carmen.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Taylor?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Zwicker.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a lot of unfinished business, but first of all, two glaring omissions in my thank you speech earlier this evening. First one being my lovely wife, Martha.
Yeah.
Who, boy, did she have to put up with a bunch of crap from me when I'd come home from some of these council meetings, so I very much want to thank her. And almost as important as my wife Martha is Jay Covington. Almost as important.
But get me in trouble with Martha, too.
Yeah.
All I can, all I can say, Mr. Zwicker, is, is Mr. Covington has felt like you were his wife.
Something like that, I think is probably. Jay has been, had a dark cloud all day. I've tried my best to, knowing that I was leaving. Renton is extremely lucky to have had the service of Jay Covington for many, many years and hopefully many, many more. He is absolute respected leader throughout the state of Washington and probably other states, but I didn't go out of state on any travel.
That's good.
Jay, you have been a great friend. You're a horrible golfer, and I appreciate that because I am equally bad, and so we have had some wonderful Friday mornings out there on the golf course. But I just could not have made it through many, many things here on council without you, and I just want to make sure that I thank you for that. With that, our Planning and Development Committee has a few committee reports.
Okay, Planning and Development Committee committee report. City Code Title IV, 2012 docket group nine, referred on July 15, 2013. The Planning and Development Committee concurs with the staff and planning commission recommendations to adopt the following items on the 2013 Title IV docket. D-97 Administrative Code Interpretations, ten interpretations which have already been in effect are to have their related code language updated. D-98 Road and Right-of-Way Standards for Infill Lots, requiring new infill single-family development to provide street frontage improvements when the new construction or and/or addition are evaluated at over $50,000. The committee further recommends that the ordinances regarding these matters be presented for first reading and advanced for second and final reading.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Zwicker. I move the council concur in the Planning and Development Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Zwicker, seconded by Mr. Prince, that council concur with the Planning and Development Committee report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The next report is City Code Title IV, docket group number nine, also. The Planning and Development Committee commends the City Center Community Plan Advisory Board and Planning Commission for their progress defining the downtown business core, which is docket number D-95, Property Maintenance Part I, Mapping Downtown. The Planning and Development Committee agrees with their respective work to scale the boundary of the downtown business core into a limited manageable area. The Planning and Development Committee requests the City Center Community Planning Advisory Board and Planning Commission continue their work and consider the following factors as guidance. Consider including businesses along the boundary of the downtown business core such as Red House, BFW, and the Service of Lennon. Evaluate the western boundary on North Third Street, and consider a boundary for a second-tier sphere of influence around the downtown business core. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Zwicker.
Yeah, just a little background on this one. What we're trying to do is tighten up the definition of downtown a little bit, and we're using the City Center Community Plan along with the Planning Commission, and they came back with some preliminary ideas that basically just blesses, but this is something that will continue to be worked on next year, and the council after I am gone will be working on it. But we just wanted to close this portion of the referral out. Without a move, the council concur in the Planning and Development Committee committee report.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Zwicker, seconded by Mr. Prince, that council concur with the Planning and Development Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The next report is the Comprehensive Plan Update Phase One. The Planning and Development Committee recommends that the work of Phase One of the state-required 2015 comprehensive plan update be recognized and held for adoption with the work of Phase Two, which is anticipated to occur in 2015. The policies of the following elements should be adopted as proposed by staff and recommended by the Planning Commission: vision, economic development, utilities, and parks, recreation, natural areas, and trails. Within the land use element, there are four subsections. Two are recommended for adoption, and two are recommended for further review and consideration. Meeting demands of local and regional growth, and protecting the natural environment, and ensuring natural resources for the future are recommended be adopted with Phase Two, and planning for the efficient use of land and promoting a safe, healthy, and attractive community should be continued, should be continued to be reviewed and refined for later adoption. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Zwicker? I move the council concur in the Planning and Development Committee committee report.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Zwicker, seconded by Mr. Prince, that council concur with the Planning and Development Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay, and our last Planning and Development Committee committee report is owner-occupied housing in the Sunset community revitalization area. The Planning and Development Committee recommends that additional potential incentives to encourage affordable owner-occupied homes in the Sunset area be deferred until the city council reviews and approves the Comprehensive Plan Housing and Human Services element update scheduled for next summer. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Zwicker.
Yeah, a little background on this one also. This one we lovingly refer to as the Howard McComber Initiative. We've worked with Howard a bit on this, and we're going to continue to work with Howard. This just closes the referral on Planning and Development Committee and instructs then the administration to continue to work. With that, I move that the council concur in the Planning and Development Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Zwicker, seconded by Mr. Prince, that council concur with the Planning and Development Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have it.
That was all, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brier.
Yes, Finance Committee has some reports.
A Finance Committee committee report, Washington State Department of Commerce Direct Appropriations Agreement, the Renton Riverview Bridge Replacement Project. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the agreement with the State Department of Commerce to accept $1,067,000 in grant funding and commit a $100,000 grant match from the Riverview Bark Bridge Replacement, for the Riverview Bridge Replacement Project. The committee also recommends that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the agreement with the Department of Commerce, and that the resolution regarding this matter be presented for reading and adoption. The committee further recommends that the budget be adjusted to reflect the receipt of grant funding. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Brier.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee report.
Second.
Been moved by Ms. Brier, seconded by Mr. Zwicker, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The last Finance Committee report is regarding the addendum to the Public Defense Services Contract. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve addendum number two to the Public Defense Services Contract with Casey and Grovel LLC, which is contract number 1131, in the amount of $410,000 annually, $615,000 over the 18-month contract period, to extend the contract from January 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015. The committee further recommends that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign the addendum. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Brier.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee report.
Second.
Been moved by Ms. Brier, seconded by Ms. Palmer, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Prince?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Utilities Committee has a committee report.
Hey, Utilities Committee committee report, final approval for the latecomer agreement request from Renton Housing Authority for water main extension related to the Glenwood Town Homes project. The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to grant final approval of a 15-year latecomer agreement to Renton Housing Authority for water main extension related to the Glenwood Town Homes project. The application for latecomer agreement was submitted by RHA on September 21, 2011. The applicant has completed construction of the water main improvements and conveyed the improvements to the city. Staff has updated the assessment roll using the front-footage method at a cost of $149.98 per foot, with a total cost of $214,393. The assessment will be triggered when the benefiting properties within the latecomer boundary are developed or redeveloped. The committee further recommends that the final assessment roll be forwarded to the city clerk, who will notify the affected property owner of the latecomer's potential assessment and the right to appeal, with council retaining the right to rule on the final action. If no appeals have been submitted within 20 days of the date of the mailing of the assessment notice, the mayor and city clerk are authorized to execute and record the latecomer agreement to finalize the matter. This is signed by the committee chair and vice chair.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Prince?
Yes, I move that the council concur with the Utilities Committee report.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Mr. Zwicker, that council concur with the Utilities Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have it. Mr. Person?
Oh, unfinished business.
You're the only person that Jason likes to. Ms. Palmer?
Yes, I have four Transportation Aviation Committee reports.
The first Transportation Aviation Committee report is regarding the Southwest 27th Street Strand of Boulevard Extension Project, Phase One, Segment 2A supplemental to the contract with Berger ABAM. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the supplemental agreement with Berger ABAM Engineers Incorporated in the amount of $334,791 for additional construction, administration, and inspection and design construction support services on the Southwest 27th Street Strand of Boulevard Extension Project. The committee also recommends that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the supplemental agreement. This is signed by the chair and member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Palmer.
I move that council concur with the committee report.
Second.
Been moved by Ms. Palmer, seconded by Mr. Person, that council concur with the Transportation Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And the next Transportation Aviation Committee report is regarding the Local Agency Certification Acceptance Qualification Agreement with WASHDOT. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the Local Agency Certification Acceptance Agreement with the Washington State Department of Transportation. The committee also recommends that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the Certification Acceptance Agreement. This is signed by the chair and member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Palmer.
I move that council concur with the committee report.
Second.
Been moved by Ms. Palmer, seconded by Mr. Person, that council concur with the Transportation Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The next Transportation Aviation Committee report is regarding the Highlands de Boeing Landing Pedestrian Connection Project. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the Local Agency Agreement with KPGPS in the amount of $204,502.46 for construction management services during construction of the Highlands de Boeing Landing Pedestrian Connection Project. The committee also recommends that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute this Local Agency Agreement. This is signed by the committee chair and member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Palmer.
I move that council concur with the committee report.
Second.
Been moved by Ms. Palmer, seconded by Mr. Person, that council concur with the Transportation Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay, and the final Transportation Aviation Committee report is regarding a utility easement with AT&amp;T at the airport. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the renewal of AT&amp;T Corporation's Utility Easement Agreement establishing a new lease rate of $16,578.90 annually through 10/31/2025. The committee also recommends that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign the new utility easement agreement. This is signed by the chair and member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Palmer.
I move that council concur with the committee report.
Second.
Been moved by Ms. Palmer, seconded by Mr. Person, that council concur with the Transportation Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have it. Thank you, Jason. Moving on to resolutions and ordinances, we have three resolutions and three ordinances for first and second reading.
One ordinance we already adopted.
Oh, that's right. Good.
So the first resolution is regarding amendments to the parking garage and area maintenance and operation agreement for the landing. Resolution of the city of Renton, Washington, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into amendments to the parking garage agreement and the parking garage and area maintenance operation and management agreement for the landing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Brier.
I move this resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
Been moved by Ms. Brier, seconded by Mr. Person, that this resolution be adopted as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And the next resolution is regarding the grant agreement for the Riverview Bridge Replacement Project. Resolution of the city of Renton, Washington, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a direct appropriations agreement with Washington State Department of Commerce, accepting a grant for the Riverview Bridge Replacement Project.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Brier.
I move that council concur with this resolution.
Second.
Been moved by Ms. Brier, seconded by Mr. Zwicker, that council adopt this resolution as read. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have it.
The final resolution is regarding the Certification Acceptance Agreement with the, with WASHDOT. Resolution of the city of Renton, Washington, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an interlocal agreement with Washington State Department of Transportation entitled Certification Acceptance Qualification Agreement.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Palmer.
I move that council adopt the resolution as read.
Second.
Been moved by Ms. Palmer, seconded by Mr. Person, that council adopt this resolution as read. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay, the next is an ordinance that is for first reading and advancement to second and final reading. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending Sections 4260 and 42110 of Chapter Two, Zoning Districts, Uses, and Standards, Section 4350 of Chapter Three, Environmental Regulations and Overlay Districts, Section 4440 of Chapter Four, Citywide Property Development Standards, Section 4660 of Chapter Six, Street and Utility Standards, Section 47150 of Chapter Seven, Subdivision Regulations, Section 48120 of Chapter Eight, Permits, General Appeals, and Section 41120, 411200, and 411250 of Chapter 11, Definitions of City Code, by amending certain regulations, amending the definitions of Final Plat Plan, Short Plat or Binding Site Plan Map Final and Yard Requirement, and adding new definitions for Lot Combination, Lot Legal, and Tax Lot Segregation pursuant to the Department of Community and Economic Development's Administrative Code Interpretations.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Zwicker. I move this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at tonight's council meeting so Jason can read it again.
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Zwicker, seconded by Mr. Prince, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading this evening. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay, an ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending Sections 4260 and 42110 of Chapter Two, Zoning Districts, Uses, and Standards, Section 4350 of Chapter Three, Environmental Regulations and Overlay Districts, Section 4440 of Chapter Four, Citywide Property Development Standards, Section 4660 of Chapter Six, Street and Utility Standards, Section 47150 of Chapter Seven, Subdivision Regulations, Section 48120 of Chapter Eight, Permits, General Appeals, and Section 41120, 411200, and 411250 of Chapter 11, Definitions of City Code, by amending certain regulations, amending the definitions of Final Plat Plan, Short Plat or Binding Site Plan Map Final and Yard Requirement, and adding new definitions for Lot Combination, Lot Legal, and Tax Lot Segregation pursuant to the Department of Community and Economic Development's Administrative Code Interpretations.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Zwicker? Mr. Swecker.
I move this ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swecker, seconded by Mr. Prince, that this ordinance be adopted as read, and this requires a roll call.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Swecker?
Aye.
Ms. Brier?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Ms. Palmer?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor. All ayes.
The ayes have it.
The final ordinance is regarding infill single-family residential development. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Section 4660 of Chapter 6, Street and Utility Standards of Title 4, Development Regulations of City Code by amending exemptions from street frontage improvement requirements for infill single-family residential development.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Swecker.
I move this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at tonight's council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swecker, seconded by Mr. Corman, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading this evening. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay, second time. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Section 4660 of Chapter 6, Street and Utility Standards of Title 4, Development Regulations of City Code by amending exemptions from street frontage improvement requirements for infill single-family residential development.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Swecker.
I move this ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swecker, seconded by Mr. Prince, that this ordinance be adopted as read, and requires a roll call.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Swecker?
Aye.
Ms. Brier?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Ms. Palmer?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor. All ayes.
The ayes have it. Thank you very much, Jason. Moving on to new business, Mr. Corman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I need to announce some, some holidays coming up. So, probably as people gathered, when we formalized it is Rich Swecker Day today. This is Rich's last council meeting. So, there will be no more council meetings this year. December 16th is a council holiday, as is December 23rd. And then, as a reminder, we have city holidays on December 25th and 26th. December 30th would have been off day because it's a 5th Monday. And then, of course, we have a city holiday on January 1st.
You know, I think it'll be great when you get back to even two meetings a month.
(laughing).
And, Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure what order you'd, you'd work through this tonight, but I did want to point out that Mr. Person and I were talking about moving the, the long study session from January 6th to the following week, January 13th. And I think that sort of affects the cascade of meetings, so we should probably iron that out first.
Okay, so, well, first of all, we'll just eliminate committee of the whole, which can be announced on the 6th.
Right.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay. So...
And, and that's, that's all I, that's all I have, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Taylor?
Uh, no, uh, no new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Uh, but Community Services Committee has been canceled for January 6th.
Okay. Ms. Brier?
I have no new business.
Okay. Mr. Prince?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. Utilities Committee on January 6th has been canceled.
Okay. Mr. Person?
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor. I see that there's a Finance Committee meeting scheduled for 3 o'clock. I'm assuming that on the 6th that Ms. Brier would like to move that up until about 6 o'clock?
Uh, are we gonna have a regular committee of the whole from 5 to 6?
We are not gonna have any.
Not? Okay.
Committee of the whole that day.
Right. Thank you for that. So, Finance at 6:00 PM?
Did you want to announce your items? Do you have a copy of that?
No, I don't.
Oh, so you have vouchers, emerging issues, and revenue streams, Westgate condos utility bill adjustment request. So, that'd be 6 o'clock on January 6th.
Thank you. Is it on the back of our page?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Person.
And then, uh, I'd also just throw out to the council that in looking for a council retreat in February, it looks like Wednesday, the 26th of February, and Thursday, the 27th of February, so...
Those on your calendar?
If you can't make it or something really dire, then we can change it. And the reason for changing the long meeting was one council member was gonna be unavailable to be there, and I want to be sure everybody's there. And also, it's, uh, this date we're swearing in three council members, and it was pointed out to me that most likely I shouldn't compress them together, so I was just in my excitement to get going, you know? That's it.
Ms. Palmer?
No, no new business.
Okay, Mr. Corman, you will be taking over public safety.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. My first order of business will be canceling the January 6th public safety meeting.
Thank you. Audience comment? Was there anybody who didn't have a chance to address the council? Please come forward, give your name for the record.
Dave Beeden? Dave Beeden, B-E-E-D-O-N, rent and resident. One thing that came up in the discussion tonight was the fact that it would be beneficial, or, well, perhaps beneficial, for members of the citizenry to get involved earlier in the process of dealing with a certain issue. So, I being an ignorant citizen, I don't know how to get involved earlier, so I will send an email to you council members asking for your feedback if you have any ideas on how a citizen can become more aware, become aware of issues earlier in the deliberation process, or whatever you want to call it. For instance, uh, street, street changes, improvements, uh, zoning changes, libraries, whatever it is. I realize that the, there's a city website, but it's not, I don't think it's set up to alert people about new things that are coming up under categories X, Y, and Z. So, ideally, there would be something like that, but I don't know what there is. Maybe you folks know, and I'd appreciate any feedback you can give me, and I'll send you an email so you have my email address. So, you can do that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Um, yeah, I'd like to make the suggestion to Mr. Person that regardless of the frequency of council meetings, formal council meetings that we end up with, that that topic should be part of that three-hour agenda. That we should, we should, as part of discussing the, our, our pattern of moving stuff, you know, through the council, we should directly consider, you know, the, the proposal, how, what stages do, would citizens get involved? And I think, because I think that is sort of central to, to the discussion. And it, it might, it might sort of expand the dialogue to a really meaningful dialogue, I think. So, for what it's worth, yeah.
Not a problem.
And I, I think that's important, especially with regard to the idea that city council meetings are kind of like the last step in approving something. And if we could get involved earlier, then we might not get blindsided or have a better feeling about what's going on.
We might all be one team going into a decision.
Thank you.
Good.
That was so funny, because Dave had the same thought I did, and I...
You need to give her a name.
Oh, sorry, Beth Asher. And I actually had a couple of ideas. One is, could we use the Renton Reporter and have a hot topics or emerging issues for council so that right from the get-go, if there's something that's gonna affect us big time, we would know about it and say, hey, we want your input. We, we'd like to get some feedback on this. And the other thing is, you've begun communicating, you know, through the utility bill, so why not do the same thing in that little file there? Hot topics, emerging issues, this could affect you. And then, the third thing is a really simple thing, which South Renton Neighborhood Association that I've been working with has used really effectively. They put the free Google translator on their site, and I took it for a spin with a Czech friend, with a Hispanic friend, and with a Somali friend, and it is great. It instantly translates the page.
Wow.
Instantly. It is amazing.
That's a great idea.
It's, um, free, open where, um, Google supports it. You can get support for it, and it just makes, you, would make your website so much more accessible for our community.
We just put it on the city website.
Um, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much, and I really appreciate that I'm here tonight. I especially want to thank, to give special thanks to the mayor for that enjoyment and excitement that I really have whenever I am driving on the Rainier, how beautiful it is, and how you can feel that, you know, the city's getting better and alive and beautiful. Thank you so much.
I'm sorry, can, can you give your name?
My name is Hamdi Abdoun, and I live in 2002 Northeast 18th Place, Renton, 98056. So, I'm a resident.
Thank you.
Um, I have also something that I want to share with the council. There is at the cross of the 2nd and, and, and Rainier, there is a young lady who is always standing there. I saw her when she first, you know, came to the place, and I feel bad every morning when I am driving, that she's there and she's, you know, uh, something's, weathering, weathering is happening to her in front of our eyes in our beautiful, you know, corner of the city, so I don't know whose job it is, but I think she deserves some support from the city or from the council or from whoever who can help her. I believe that many of you saw, saw her. The second, my second point is also, and I have little, little, little points that I want to share, is that the council meetings, I am not somebody who comes frequently, but I am feeling that it is very important. I have learned a lot from these good citizens that were speaking today, but, tonight, but many of my community and especially the minority community, which is, I don't know even how, how much is the percentage nowadays, because Renton is becoming diversified, that we need more involvement and more engagement, and we want you to reach to us. We want the mountain to move to us, which means the council has to come to the community and connect with us so that we can have more frequency at the same time. I, we, 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 we would wish that you continue, like, you know, your, your weekly or monthly or how many days, Mondays, that you, you meet with the community, that frequency of meeting with the community and having, giving us the opportunity to come. And invite more and more will be something that will be appreciated. And please, don't think about, you know, minimizing or making it like, you know, we want to have your, 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 your feelings. We want to feel you and, 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 and be more connected, and we want you to stay and, 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 and sit like you're sitting tonight. The landing, that beautiful landing is beautiful. We like it very much, but most of the time, it is very expensive. It's not like that many of us who have, who didn't come to this country with PhDs or doctorates or that stuff, kind of stuff, came, you know, with that mind that can do business, that can flourish with business, that can change. And, you know, people who are usually from other countries have something to contribute. We, we're part of the, you know, reviving groups that are reviving the city. A city with beautiful landing with, you know, only those who can afford, you know, the, the business or for the rich is not enough. We want a city that is for all. We want that landing to have affordable business, you know, whoever is buying, or I don't know if I heard correctly, somebody's buying, some affordable content, components of, of it would be great, whether it's redesigning or whether it is, you know, adding new more spaces, but it shouldn't be for the rich only. I appreciate your work, and I like you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Dave McCammon, City of Renton, M C C A, M M O N. I would just like to say that even though I know it's next to impossible to get the word out when you've got 50 people showing up, a fourth of who talked today, and on four different subjects, um, I'm just asking that you do try and find what you can to show that you are trying to get out the news. Like I said, I, I know that you can't when nobody's listening. I mean, I can use myself. This is the first time I've been here for some time. It's kind of hard to show up when you start work at 5:00 in the morning. So, but, uh, the conversation on, it was news to me, my own fault, because I wasn't paying more attention. It, um, all I'm asking is that when you talk amongst yourselves, you be certain of how to get the news out so that you cannot be accused of not saying something, just so that more citizens can understand, and you protect yourself. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stuart Avery, Renton. I'm not gonna feel too bad about coming up here a second time because you guys got a couple of weeks off after this, so I'll use my time. And by the way, um, when I said I came here literally from work and hadn't been home, I wore this to work. And I work at Auburn, so it just goes to show I'm, I'm doing what I can for Renton. And I want to thank the speaker who came up just a little while ago and spoke. This is exactly why this public forum is so important to Renton residents. What I would ask is that the council consider over the coming weeks, as you deliberate